All right, we will go ahead and get this meeting started. I'll first start by saying Happy Valentine's Day to all of you and really appreciate all of you coming in tonight to spend Valentine's Day here. So with that, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al, roll call.
And for the listening public, we have one caller that's unidentified, so I will ask if that caller is either Benson or Minor. Are either of you online? Okay, we'll note both of those as absent. Brunick?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Mybaum?
Present.
Schramm?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Mayor Moser?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
All right, number two, under routine business, is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 4th, 2021. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting? Anybody in the public want to comment? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, moving on to the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on paying the bills? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the city manager's reports, I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Couple things to visit with you this evening, but before we get started with that, I want to remind everyone that our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. So that's our daily challenge that we give ourselves at the City of Yankton. Next week, of course, no meeting. The following week, February 28th, plan to have our work session. If our numbers still stay low with COVID-19, we'll plan to do that strategic planning discussion. I'll let you all know for certain, but that's, I'm thinking what we're going to have on for our February 28th strategic plan. If our numbers stay the way they are, I think we can work on getting together in a group and inviting people in if they would like to be involved in that conversation. Also, along with that, health of our employees is very good right now, so we're happy about that. I think we'll keep this meeting room spread out for a while, mostly because it's a lot of work for our IT department to spread it back out and put it back, condense it back together. And so we'll just monitor it for a bit, and if our numbers stay low for a period of time, we'll squish everyone back together. So thanks for your patience with that. Had another retirement announcement, which I don't think we've made necessarily publicly yet. In the police department, Corporal Brad Parker has retired. I believe his last day is the 18th. He's electing not to have a city retirement party, but he'll be celebrating with some friends and family this weekend. So we wish Corporal Parker all the well wishes we do with everyone as they enter that exciting phase of their life. So we're excited for that. As folks know, nominating petitions are available if people are interested in running from city, for city, for, not from, running for city commission positions. We have three open positions. We do have two petitions that have been returned by incumbents Schramm and Minor. So letting folks know that those are available. They need to be returned by Friday, February 25th, 5:00 p.m. And if you do not want to get your petition at the city, you can get it off the South Dakota State website as well. They're available on their site as well with instructions. So letting folks know about that. Also, starting to get the word out about the potential of an election. If we have an election, letting people know the voting centers and getting the word out, definitely, no matter who's running, we want to make sure as many people know about the election, get registered and vote. So we're working with our community partners on that. Library Foundation is working on a fundraiser. If you want to give your library a high five, you can bring $5 to the library and you will get a heart on the window with your name on it, or you can give it directly to a Library Foundation board member. So that's an exciting thing they're trying to do, to raise a little extra cash during We spent a little money, we meaning Todd Larson and I spent a little money this week. The boiler, which keeps the water temperate at the SAC Aquatics Center, is on its last legs. So that's about a $23,000 to $25,000 bill that we weren't anticipating, but we have to keep that water at swimmable temperatures. So really, we've, at the point at that facility, as everyone knows, where we're going to start having some major things and major repairs. So we went ahead and brought that PO through. If you've been to City Hall lately, at least today, and if you come to City Hall in the next couple of days, you're going to see somebody working in our foyer on the north side of City Hall. Many people know we have a mural that kind of wraps around the entranceway there. There is some historic component to that. Brad Bees is working with a conservationist who specializes in murals to give that a little TLC and make sure we're preserving that appropriately. If people are interested in that history, I know Brad would be happy to give it, but we do have someone working there, so please stop by if you haven't had a chance. Want to give a shout out to Yankton Fire Department and to our dispatchers, and also to our friends in our other departments who responded to the call on Tuesday at Long's propane. That's not a typical call for our department. And in fact, I think it was the first of that type for many of our first responders, but they handled it well professionally. Everybody from our department went home safe and uninjured, to my knowledge, and so that could have gone really wrong in a lot of ways. So we thank interim chief Brad Moser, as well as everyone else involved, helping on that effort. So thank goodness there wasn't more damage or a worse outcome. So good job for everyone involved there. I think that's what I have on my list, but if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right, we will go ahead and move on. This is the time and the place for the public to appear before the city commission. Anything related to an item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no movement in the commission chambers, we will move on to the consent agenda. I will alert my fellow commissioners that we are removing number three from the consent agenda into new business. So when I do read these items and then ask for what you would like to do, please note leaving out number three is going to be intentional. So consent agenda items, number one is setting the date of February 28th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in room 114 here at the Career Manufacturing Technical Education Academy for the next work session for the Yankton City Commission, in reference to what City Manager Leon went through. Number two is a possible quorum event on March 22nd, 2022, for the Thrive Annual Membership Meeting. No official commission action will take place. Then moving on to now is number 3.4, or four, to establish February 28th, 2022, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for March 4th, 2022, from Stripes Inc., doing business as Mojo's Third Street Pizza. Jeff Dehoff owner at 106 East Third Street for the NFAA at 800 Archery Lane. We have number five, establishing February 28th, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for June 11th, 2022, from Rock and Rumble Inc., doing business as Yankton Rib Fest. Michael Sarda president, between the blocks of Third Street, between Cedar Street and Walnut Street, plus a half block west on Third Street to the alley, half of Walnut Street to the alley, and half a block north, south on Walnut and Third Street. Number six is to establish February 28th, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for July 23rd, 2022, from Rock and Rumble Inc. Michael Sarda president, doing business as Rock and Rumble, which will take place on Third Street from Douglas to the half block east on Capitol, plus intersecting Capitol Street and a fourth block north to a half block south. And number seven, established February 28th, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailer's license for one day, March 17th, 2022, from the Center. Chris Thury is the executive director, and that is located at 900 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the consent item agenda.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-18 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for three days, August 19th through the 21st, 2022, from the Yankton Area Riverboat Days. Melissa Wubin treasurer Riverside Park, for Riverside Park. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Anybody in the public? All right, Al, roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Abstaining.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number two, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-19 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for three days, August 19th through the 21st, 2022, from Yankton Area Riverboat Days. Melissa Wubin treasurer for City Hall Auditorium. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Schramm, I skipped you, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Villanueva?
Abstaining affiliation.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number three, under new business, is a second reading and public hearing of ordinance 1058, supplement number one to the ordinance 1055, the 2022 annual appropriation ordinance. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public like to address the commission? Roll call.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, then, or old business, no, old business number four, sorry, is consideration of memorandum 22-22 recommending approval of the applications from the Riverboat Days Committee for a transient merchant license for August 19th through the 21st, 2022, and a special events dance license for August 19th to the 21st, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the commission on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Abstaining affiliation.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries, and my apologies. That will be the start of new business, sorry, Al. I just looked down and went, ah, I had this highlighted in pink on my agenda to move it, and was so worried I'd miss it, that that is actually new business. Is it a problem if it's number one, or that we just did it then? Do we have to redo it?
No.
No, we're good, okay. I apologize for that. I didn't say that. Okay, moving on to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-20 and resolution 22-06 for the surplus of K-9 Max and the adoption agreement for K-9 Max to now retired Officer Knowles. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the commission on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number two is consideration of memorandum 22-21 regarding the airport rescue grant. This is for $32,000 in airport rescue grant funds. This will aid, if approved, to offset the financial impacts of the pandemic. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number three, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-23 regarding change order number six regarding the Huether Family Aquatics Center. This is to replace an undersized HVAC unit with an adequate sized HVAC unit in the concession area, I believe, and that amount is $21,097.85. And then it's also mentioning 2,472 for ceiling grid in the same area, and it also includes liquidated damages as well in that motion. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this change order? All right, anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. So continuing to work on the Huether Family Aquatics Center and making sure it's adequate space, not only for our patrons to use, but our employees. So thank you for that. Number four, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-24 regarding SAC, the Summit Activities Center rate changes. In this memorandum, it would put a day pass from $6 to $7, monthly rate from $15 to $20, and an annual rate of $120 to $200, if approved tonight, would be effective April 1st, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Manager Leon, did you kind of want to walk us through why this request to change rates is coming up at this point?
Sure. So many of you remember that when we first went down the road of the pandemic, we drastically changed our service levels at the Summit Activities Center. We wanted to respect the school, and because we're in a partnership with the school on that building, we wanted to respect them in terms of keeping folks separated as much as possible, which is difficult at the Summit Activities Center, and also respecting the fact that, you know, we weren't sure utilizing gym space in the beginning of the pandemic with close quarters, et cetera, was a good idea. We made a number of changes at the Summit Activities Center, including changing of hours, asking folks, you know, obviously to be separate. There were certain days that were reserved and hours reserved solely for certain school uses, so we weren't commingling the public with school groups, et cetera, at that time. We also were shut down for a number of time, a number of days. We provided less in terms of activities that were going on. In fact, many were canceled, and we eliminated group fitness entirely. And so at that time, we thought, you know, we can't charge the same rate for that less amount of service. So Todd and his staff worked to back off the rates that were being charged. Now we've learned a lot in the last couple of years, and we're building back up to where we were in terms of group fitness and having open swims and all the things that come along with Summit Activities Center. So we think it's prudent to move the rates back to, you know, hopefully become as solvent as possible as we can in that operation, knowing that that's not the goal to profit. That certainly is not going to get us there, but just to be a little more realistic in what we're charging. Todd can answer any details if you want to talk specific numbers of where we were pre-pandemic
Any other commission discussion?
Seems pretty reasonable based on what I know of gym memberships.
At the tail end of last year, we had the conversation with the Huether Family Aquatics facility in mind, so we were not quite at that break even point that I think most of us would have liked to have seen. So we plan to raise rates, so those will go into effect here this year. Can you provide a similar overview as to where we're at with the Summit Activities Center? What would it take for us to get to a break even arrangement with the Summit Activities Center and what we charge for rates? We could probably have to do a Todd and Amy and Al trifecta, but I believe we budgeted somewhere in the neighborhood of being, transferring $625,000 into the general fund from the, to the Summit Activities Center. Dwayne or Al might correct me. And roughly how many members do we have, Todd? Oh, maybe Todd has that answer for us.
Testing. Good. So last year, looking at 2021 and the city financials, again, I don't think, I think it's safe to say things haven't been finalized yet from last year. General fund transfer was just under $400,000 for 2021. Currently, we're at 718 active members. So this $5 per month increase, if everybody was paying monthly, that'd be another $43,000. You know, if you take $400,000, the total loss, and divide that by 718, you're talking $555 per membership. We'd have to increase rates. Prior to the, and that's if we don't grow membership. Obviously, the goal would be to grow membership. Prior to the pandemic in 2019, our monthly membership was $29, just under $30. So market rate, great life here in town, just fitness, not the golf part of it, they're at $45 a month. So we have a ways to go to get to be competitive in the market at 45 a month. And again, granted, we were only at 30 a month prior to the pandemic, so I don't know that we would go to 45 a month, but we'd have a ways to go. And I shouldn't say the 555 is per month. That would be per member over that course of the year to get to that number, so. So we have a ways to go to try to get to solvency without growing numbers. If we grow numbers, then we got a different situation.
The total budgeted loss, the operating loss for the summit for 2022 is projected to be $665,714, and that includes some capital expenditures as well.
Plus the 25 I talked about for the boiler.
Had an insult to injury over there. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Mybaum?
Yep. I'd be curious to know where we're at with the next round of conversations that we'll be having with the school as to the future arrangement when it comes to the Summit Activities Center.
Do have a meeting scheduled, I believe. It's after spring break. I want to say it's the week of the 20th or 22nd, March, with the city school joint committee. So I believe that's Moser, Johnson, and Villanueva are the commissioners there. So that's planned, that was the earliest time we could get everybody together, so that's a forthcoming.
All right, any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this agenda item? Roll call.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number five, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-27 and resolution 22-07 regarding the mower purchase for our Parks Department. This is for Cubota F2690 mower from our Sourcewell contract for $22,314. We are getting a trade-in value of $5,414 for the old mower, which brings that purchase to $16,925,000. Was budgeted. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this agenda item from the commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number six is an introduction and first reading of ordinance 1048, and the first reading and establishing February 28th, 2022 is the date for the second reading and public hearing regarding a consumption ordinance. This is for proposed changes to the public consumption ordinance. Can I get an introduction?
Introduce.
All right, number seven is an introduction and first reading of ordinance 1048, and the first reading and establishing February 28th, 2022, as the date for the second reading and public hearing regarding the special event no parking ordinance. And for the listening public, this is pertaining to our special event no parking zones in giving the city manager a designee approval, ability to approve this request. Can I get an introduction?
Introduce.
Thank you. Number eight, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-33 regarding resolution 22-08, which is a plot of Lot B1, being the accretion property lying south of Lot B. Let's see, we can go down to, basically, the location is the west end of the Old River Road. Thomas and Mary Posh are owners. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this plot review? Any commission discussion on this plat review?
Would Dave Mingo mind updating us on what the planning commission decided on this item?
The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed plat.
Any further commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-28 regarding an equipment purchase from Sourcewell contract for a new semi-tractor for the Department of Public Works Joint Powers Division. This is for a 2023 International LT Day Cab in the amount of $126,543. $130,000 was budgeted for this item. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the city commission on this agenda item? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. And number 10 under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-36 regarding support for inclusion of the 911 dispatchers in Class B of the South Dakota retirement system. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't know, City Manager Leon, if you're wanting to walk us through this or if you're going to turn it over based off your affiliation.
Well, I'm going to walk you through it until I get in over my head and then do what everyone does when they're in over their head. They call dispatch and dispatch helps you out. So for those of you who don't know about the South Dakota retirement system, there's two classes. We call them classes of retirement. There's public safety class, which right now is law enforcement certified officers, and I believe fire professionals as well, full-time fire professionals. Those are the two types of employees that we have in the one class. The other class are called civilian employees. So that's people like Al and I and Adam and Dave and, you know, all the other folks in the retirement. And there's different levels. So public safety has, public safety employees have a little bit different retirement. I don't know if you can say better or worse, but different retirement structure. The retirement is a different percentage. So instead of the 6%, which is what all civilian employees are required to allocate, it's 8% for public safety. And you all know that the city or governmental entity then matches. They also have a different age, so public safety folks can retire a bit earlier than civilian retirement. So what has become to light for a number of years and has been known for a number of years and discussed is that E-911 dispatchers fit the description of public safety employees. If you read what that is in South Dakota law, they meet that description. And so there is an effort in the state legislature right now, a bill that's being floated that would move our dispatchers, move all dispatchers to the public safety employment out of civilian employment. So not asking you tonight to approve that, we're asking you tonight if you want to approve a letter to support that effort. And if you'd like, Julia can talk a little bit more about some of the reasons for that, although they are detailed in your memo. I don't have a recommendation. You maybe noticed that there, that I didn't give a recommendation. I do have a personal opinion, but I'm not giving that either. I sit on the governor's state E-911 board, and because of that, been asked to remain neutral on this item. So I won't be telling you what I think you should do here, but I've visited with Julia and with Dwayne Johnson, and so certainly, you know, would encourage you to listen to her thoughts and what she thinks is best for dispatch. So that's what, if you act on this tonight, you'd be authorizing that the mayor sign a letter in support of this bill. Where that goes in the legislature is anybody's guess right now.
Julia, did you want to come forward and just kind of give the commission your thoughts on this?
Thank you, honorable mayor and members of the commission. I've also asked Matt Thule to join us. He's remote, if anybody would like to listen to Matt. He sits on the South Dakota Board of APCO and NINA. Matt, did you want to start, and then I'll add some comments as well?
Sure. Thanks for having me. So as she had mentioned, this, you know, has been an effort a few times in the past where we've attempted to go through the SDRS process for getting us moved over to Class B, keep running into hurdles. We do, there's six points that need to be met in order to be in Class B. Dispatchers do meet all of them. One of the ones that's been questioned in the past is whether or not our jobs are stressful. And if you've ever sat in a 911 center and seen during a busy time a high tense call going on, whether it be a caller calling in because they're being burglarized, or a spouse calling in because their spouse is laying there unresponsive, and you're dealing with the emotional side with them and then trying to help them to save their spouse and their loved ones, the stress is definitely there. There's been studies done on PTSD in dispatch centers, and PTSD in dispatch centers is huge. One study that was done by the Academy of Emergency Dispatch shows that 911 dispatchers, PTSD is in the area of 18 to 24% of dispatchers have PTSD, which is higher than every other agency type out there. Law enforcement, even our military tops out at about 20%. Part of the drive for this legislation, in 2017, SDRS changed its guidelines for retirement. If you were hired prior to 2017, if you're in Class A, you need to reach what they call the rule of 85, where your age and the number of years you work need to equal 85. Starting in 2017, they changed that. They took the rule of 85 out. Class B, it was a rule of 75. They took that rule out as well, and they switched it to say that you need to reach the age of 67 before you can get 100% retirement in Class A. Class B is the minimum of 57 years. Some of the hazards that come with the 911 dispatch, your hearing suffers greatly by the headsets that we need to wear in order to hear the officers or hear the people calling in and talking to us on the phone. Your dexterity, your cognitive abilities, they all slow down with age. And they try not to have, you know, police officers and firefighters working on the streets still in their over 60 years of age due to those abilities lessening with age. The same way is true with the 911 dispatcher. They're losing those abilities, and 911 is where it all starts. We start the call, we're the ones dealing with the emotional stress of the caller, making sure the officers and the firefighters and the paramedics get where they need to go. We're keeping those people safe as well. And one thing that, every 911 dispatcher, doesn't matter where they're at, they work for what's called a P-SAP. And P-SAP stands for Public Safety Answering Point. The key words are public safety. So we're viewed as public safety in a lot of realms, but when it comes to the retirement area, they're not viewing us as public safety. We're being viewed more as clerical or secretarial work, which, again, if you've ever been in a 911 center, you'll see and agree that that definitely is not the case. Al, I'm welcome for any questions, if anybody has any questions for me from the APCO or
Thanks, Matt. I just have a couple of things I'll add to what Matt said. So we've had one person retire from dispatch in Yankton, I think, ever in the history of having a dispatch center, and that retirement happened last week. I think the reason for that is the nature of the job. It's the nature of the shift work that we do. You know, it's a 24-hour operation, so we have people working around the clock. And then due to the stressful nature of the job as well, we do not see a lot of people retiring in the field. They just don't stick with it for a number of reasons, I think. A few years ago, we saw a death of one of our employees that was a 25-year veteran. I can't say, I'm not a medical doctor, I can't say that the symptoms that he suffered were related to his job, but I certainly wouldn't deny that I think that it might have been related. We have 10 full-time employees, so I know that there is some financial obligation going from a 6% to an 8%, but with 10 employees full-time, it's not considerable. Also, the number of people across the state and across the nation that retire from 911 dispatch is very low, 1% to 5% historically. So that's another reason that we're looking at this legislation and hoping that you will support it. Thank you.
Mayor, if you just give me a minute, I'm going to take off my city commission hat and I'm going to put on my police chaplain hat and just say that the group of people that we have working in dispatch is, I would put them up against anybody else in the state. They're dedicated, solid people, and I turn my radio on when I don't have anything else going on and I listen to the, you know, I just, yesterday, they were doing CPR. I don't even understand how you can do that from dispatch, but they were doing that. And so these folks are hard workers and they deserve all the support that we can give them.
Yeah, I should clarify, my motion was to support this effort. I didn't note that. But also, I've spent a lot of time in the dispatch center with Julia and her team, Doug, who just retired, and have seen the kind of stressful situations they end up in and fully support us, giving them this, I think, just rewards for the work they do, but also maybe helping support employee retention efforts. So I think this is something that I hope the state follows up on and supports.
I'd also like to switch hats and put on my firefighter helmet for a second. I just want to echo what you both have said, commissioners have said, and it's so important. Julia, thank you. Thank you all the dispatchers for what you do. You're the very first voice, that person who's having most likely the worst day of their entire life by calling 911 is speaking to, and it would be a dispatcher who's trained and who's ready to send someone out to help, whether that be police, fire, EMS, whoever. So just want to say thank you, and I fully support this.
Any other commission discussion?
I have a quick question in regards to the legislation, outside of echoing what everybody here has said. Certainly appreciative of the efforts of the 911 folks. I suppose this is more, the legislation itself, it's talking about if the county in which the 911 telecommunit works has adopted an ordinance designating 911 telecommuters or telecommunications as Class B members. I just want to make sure that, you know, it seems like there's going to be another step if this does make it through. Sounds like you're going to get the support here tonight. You may need some more support from us in the future, and very likely that you'll have it.
And I wouldn't be surprised, Commissioner Mybaum, if there's an edited language. A lot of P-SAPs are, you know, county-wide. Our P-SAP serves the county. Many are county-run, and ours is a little bit unique and one of the few that's run by the city. So, you know, my suggestion to...
If I can step in on that for one second. So there is an amendment to that wording on that legislation. It's going to be changed from the county to the governing agency for those situations, because there are a couple of them out there that are not county-run, so there is an amendment for that. And you are correct on the, so the legislation, what the legislation is doing, there's two steps. It's just modifying the Class B retirement legislation to add 911 telecommunicators into the Class B area. And then there's also another stipulation put in saying that the governing agency needs to opt in in order for their employees to be part of the program.
Sounds like you're ahead of the information that's available on the legislature website. Thank you for that.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunig?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye, motion carries. And my thanks to Julia and the dispatch team for the many reasons said here. I too have a pager on at my house a lot, and I'm always impressed with how calm, cool, and collected and professional they are when answering, as Commissioner Villanueva said, probably some of the hardest days of people lives. And as we've said, on-call 24/7/365, that phone is answered. No holidays, no weekends. We continue to serve the public, and I applaud you and your staff for doing that, and I would be honored to sign that letter.
All right, moving on, we have no other business in front of the city commission tonight, I believe. Amy, correct? Nothing to add here?
Just the executive session, mayor.
Yep, okay. Then I will take a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Anybody abstaining? All right, we are adjourned into executive session.